Sales and use, city PJ, alcohol, Pike Road shared. And simplified, we're at $136 million in that bucket. And I think I've got, we've, there's been a ton of government money the last two years. Last, since March of 20, there's been estimated $500 million to individuals in the city of Montgomery. And I think it skewed that number. You can look at, there's a list, everybody's got a list of some of the previous years we had. We'll run through it real quick. 2015, we had 100 million in that bucket, 102, 104, 105, 600. Then EGI kicked in, we went to 111, 600,000. And then COVID, the COVID check came in, we got about 185 million in my estimations that year to individuals, and it went up to 115. And this year, we're going to be at about 131. But we got approximately 320 million checks to individuals. And that's not including checks to small businesses. And they got another 12.7 billion statewide. And Montgomery probably got a similar share of that in Montgomery. From a guy that made a lot of those loans at banking, those people that didn't need the money, spent it. They, they bought inventory and collateral and, and all, all kinds of stuff. So it has skewed the number. And there's a Bloomberg article I sent out today, and I said that, that Harvard economist was estimating that maybe 25% of our GDP was a result of federal stimulus. I think this budget will be fine the next year or so as we come. And I'm worried about fixed, fixed expenses going forward. I, I think we've got an anomaly year right now, and we don't know where we're going to go from here. That, that's, that's kind of my spiel.
Well, I had asked Betty to talk about that item. And I asked David Corbin to give her some information also. I don't see him here. So Betty, you want to just address that? Because I, I think we got, in talking to league municipalities, and then I talked to Betty about the number that she projected. And it's really, to me, I'm with you, it's kind of weird that we could project a high number like that. But I'm hearing from other people across the state, league municipalities, saying that everybody's projecting a higher number. Even though they had the highest number ever last year, they're projecting higher than that this year. And it don't make sense to me as a...
Charlie, I won't, I won't argue that. I think that we got the federal dollars. I mean, we've got a lot of the people that have gotten PPP loans, small businesses, will probably spend it in the next three months. Their taxes, their company taxes is due tomorrow, they're personally, and they're going to see what tax liability, and they're going to probably dump some of it. I won't argue that next year will go up. I'm worried about if we set in fixed, long-term fixed expenses, where it'll go three years, five years from now. That's where I'm worried about.
That's good. Betty, you want to just talk about it a little bit?
Yes, I will. Address that. My numbers, and I understand your concerns, Councilman Grimes, believe me. We have spent from June up until the end of July, working on weekends and what have you. And I not only look at what's happening now, I look at what has happened in the past, which is why I provided this sheet here to you. That did not come from David Corbin. I sent it to him so that he could send along to you what our debt service schedule is. And you got both of those, if I understand him correctly.
I did, I did. Thank you.
And David could not be here today. But what I look at, based on, and I understand that this could be an anomaly year, okay? But I went back and I actually looked at the calculations. Had we not had a pandemic, and we have always budgeted somewhere between 2 and 2.5% growth in the city, and Mr. Jenright is here, he can attest to that, and some of the other council members, Mr. Pruitt, Mr. Calhoun, that has been around for a while, okay? And in doing that, I just took the entire budget, just disregard sales tax alone. And based on had last year not been a pandemic year, our budget going up 2%, I didn't even go to 2.5. We would be in our 22 budget, looking at a budget of about $270 million, which is 3/4 or more of a million than what we got in the budget that has been presented by Mayor Reed to the council. So I'm saying that to say that, even though if this number is a little bit high, and I don't believe it is for 22, and I'm going to get to the part about how we will sustain what we have in this budget here, okay? I do believe that, based on my calculations and recalculating and recalculating, that this number is a good number. And mind you, I'm looking at projected revenue at the end of this fiscal year, which is September 30th. By the time we get finished with our 13th accounting period, that we're going to be sitting on between 130 to 131 million in taxes, okay? This, this sales tax. And so with that being said, I always, and I take this budget, I have a document here, you can't read the lines on it because it's quite small, but every revenue line in our budget, I go through it. And there are some lines in here that are probably underestimated, that would offset any shortfall to some degree that you would see in the sales and use tax total dollar now. In addition to that, the revenue growth, based on the number that I projected for fiscal year '22, as proposed in the document, that number, had we not had a pandemic, and based on the fact that we had a $259 million budget for 2020, things going along normally, we still would have been looking at a $265 to $70 million budget in '22. Now, what's going to help us sustain these numbers that are proposed in this budget is not only that revenue growth that I have put in there, based on what things would have been like, normal plus 2.5%, is the fact that we have restructured the city's debt, okay?
Yeah, I saw that.
Now, in the current budget, you're looking at $35.6 million in long and short-term debt. Next year, that debt being paid out of general fund is going to be a fraction less than 21 million, okay? So you can see that savings right there. That is what is going to allow the city to afford this budget in part, plus some revenue growth, okay? And that's not just for '22. I have to look beyond that. I looked at '23, '24, and you got the debt service schedule, and you can see how in '22, '23, it's about level, and then it dropped down a little bit, and each year thereafter that, until you get to one year, and it goes a slight tick to where we are now, okay? And so, I mean, I'm confident in my numbers.
Well, thank you. I think you make a good point. And let me just say this to you, Council. Being here a long time.
2040.
In '09, we had a budget that was, we thought was a good budget when we made it, '08. But in January of '09, we were in trouble. And we went back, and we just put a 2% across-the-board cut to every department. Very simple, but we knew we had to do something, and we did it. And that's exactly what you do with these budgets too, is you, you, you project what you think is a educated guess, and you go with that, and if it don't work, then you have to back off of it, but if revenue don't come in. And I, I guess that's the only way you can look at it. It's always, we've always looked at it that way. We had to use what we had, and we got to, so I think that's my answer to the whole thing. I think it is an educated guess that we're working with, and you can always, in January, go back and say, Mayor, you got to cut your budget. You don't got no money.
Charlie, my only argument with that is, if we give big raises, we got to cut bodies. We got to cut bodies. We don't, we missed the number, we're cutting bodies. We already got the trash not being picked up, the grass not being cut, so we're cutting bodies at that point. And that, that's not a winning thing. I got one question. Betty, I don't argue your numbers, but when you got all this retail sales tax, my little thing, if we got, if every dollar that came into the city of Montgomery, and I talked to an economist in Atlanta, and he said the lower income people spend most of their money. If they spent it all, it's $11 million additional the last year for us in 2021. And Anna, what is the, what's the multiplier effect for every dollar spent in your city?
Seven times.
Seven times. So from then, if that money's spent, then it multiplies three and a half times. That's what I'm saying. We, we got a big wad of money in, and it's scary, because then it turns over, and then we have the multiplier effect, so that 11 million could turn into 40 million bucks. And that, that's, that's kind of where, that's where I'm at, guys. I mean, I want the city employees to get all the raises they can get, but I want to know that three years from now, if the government money cuts off, we'd be able to pay the bills.
Okay. I think we, we understand your situation. What we want to do is take all this information we got right now and go through the debate. Anybody else got any questions about page one?
Well, I just want to say that I kind of, I agree with Grimes, Councilor Grimes, in the sense of, it's one thing to project that we may get some additional earnings and some additional income, there's another thing to go ahead and allocate every dime that we're getting extra, not leaving any wiggle room in there. And then again, that comes to bodies. We're not maintaining where we are. I, I get the cause, and I know we all do, about, you know, stuff not being done in the city of Montgomery. And that's our main job, to make sure we can offer the services to the constituents in the city of Montgomery, and that this, and this city looks good. We are not able to do that. We have a fire department that's not fully staffed, we have an MPD that's not fully staffed, we have parks and recs that's not fully staffed, we have sanitation that's not fully staffed. All these departments are already working under staff, you know, criteria, what they need to be, and they're barely maintaining what they have. We're even talking about contracting out some services that we normally offer. We're going to be contracting out, we got to pay, but, but we got to be careful with that then, because we can't cut bodies in January if we've realized that, you know, we're not meeting the, we're not meeting the mark.
Mr. President.
Council.
Ms. Calhoun.
Council. Mr. President.
I'm sorry.
And these are some great questions and comments that the council is making as far as where we go, '23, '24. I just heard Ms. Graham, you know, some of those things, when we talk about shorter the fire department, the police department, and all the, it's in this budget. When we're asking for the increase of all these employees that we need to sustain Montgomery, it's in this budget.
Exactly.
It's in this budget.
So I don't think so. Are we budgeted?
Oh, yeah. If you go through, if you wait and go through each department head, we'll show you where the money's at. CC and I have attended every meeting with every department head, and we have seen what they've requested and how that request was satisfied.
Jenright, let me mention here that every dollar is not allocated. You need to remember, we do have a savings account better than we ever had. Not that we want to touch it. As a matter of fact, I'm trying to get it to grow at least until it gets to 20% of our general fund budget. We have been back in the 2009 day, where we only had, we had less than a million dollars in savings.
Exactly.
Okay? And this year, we're expecting to get it up to no less than $36 million.
That's fantastic. Let me, let me say one, Charlie, to one last thing, and I'll kind of pass it on to somebody else. Somebody just texted me the payroll from Hyundai. Few years old, to put it in perspective, in 2020 budget, we took in $185 million to individual, 320 million to individuals in this budget, 2021. Hyundai's annual payroll is only $222 million, folks. That's, that's, that kind of puts it in perspective of how much, when you dump a bunch of money in the economy, if we shut Hyundai tomorrow, guys, it'd be, we'd feel it, we'd feel it quick. That's, that's what I'm saying. There's a bunch of money dumped in that's not normal.
I agree with you.
But we also have to remember...
All right. Anybody else got a question on page one?
We've got government here too.
Yeah. Montgomery's almost inflation proof. I've seen it for years. With our government employees, it's almost inflation. We don't have a, we don't have a big fluctuation.
We need occupation attack, right?
If we could get it through.
Yeah, my buddy.
Y'all's buddy blitzed it, it gets through. Yeah. Killed us, thanks to Greenville legislation.
Yes, sir.
Pike Road legislation. Okay. All right. Page two. Any questions on page two? Betty, on financial institutions, we doubling our income from financial institutions?
Uh, yes, sir.
Max Credit Union going to pay us that much more?
All the financial institutions. I, I know that in the years, excuse me, in the years after we got through that last recession, a lot of them were probably doing like the city, I mean, the individuals do, that net operating loss, if you want to call it that. And so we were not getting as much money. It is coming back now where we are getting.
So the banks are making money again.
We're back into the $2 million range again.
Anybody else on page two? Going to page three.
Hold on, Charlie, I got one. Go ahead, Brown.
Where are we at on the licenses and permits?
I didn't pass it.
What page are you on?
It's, it's at the top of page two. The total is, Betty.
Total's on page right there, 42 million, up to $2 million.
I'm trying to see where, which line item did you say?
Page one and two.
Page two, way at the top, Betty, it kicked over.
Yeah, that's the total from the previous section, I'm sorry. I was trying to figure out what line item you were asking me about. Yeah, but that total comes from the previous page, it just got bumped over.
How are we doing, I guess, year-to-date on that? We, we going to get to the...
The business licenses, is that what you're asking about? Right now, we're over budget.
Okay.
As of the end of August.
Yeah, year-to-date, year-to-date, we're, we're...
So we made a bunch ahead while they recently...
We did.
A little behind last year, according to the August 31st, but we ought to make that up in, in September. Okay? Let's go to page three. Any questions on revenue from page three? Most of that is parks and recs, and different things happen there.
Are we still collecting money on the silver red lights? I thought we weren't collecting any money on them.
Oh, red lights you do. You don't on speed cameras.
So the camera with the, the, the traffic?
Traffic lights, traffic, red lights you got, we got revenue there. Down, down, predict to be down this year, but...
Charlie, I got one question. And it's on revenue for riverfront events.
What line is that?
That's 45206.
Yeah, riverfront event.
I mean, that's, that's, that's kind of low, with the facilities that we have here in Montgomery that we're projecting. Anybody want to talk about that?
Kay.
Kay, can we ask you?
You have a hard time hearing you.
And we can get to the department head, if you guys don't mind. Will you just move up front, if you don't mind? Because you guys might be stepping to the mic.
That would probably actually be my... This is basically conservative, but there are many things that are comped in one way or another down there.
Comped, okay.
And so they're complementary.
Yeah.
So revenue comes in based on more like hotel rooms that are taken by organizations, food truck sales, you know, sales tax off of things associated with the events. So the actual rental is many times the way to get those groups down there. And he's, a lot of the promoters, it's, it's all about the sales tax, ticket sales and all that kind of stuff, not about the rental of the facility itself.
Right. Well, yeah, what's the rental for the riverfront? What, what?
5,000.
5,000.
It's usually 3,500 for most of, I mean, we'll reduce that if they're bringing, and then it goes down even further if it's a nonprofit.
Okay. Thank you.
We really haven't rented, we, we haven't rented it out all year. We don't anticipate to rent that out.
Well, you know, COVID has had a significant impact the last couple of years, so that's... So that revenue just comes in in many other ways, other than just actual rental of the facility itself.
Okay, Adam, page four.
Thank you, Kay.
Interest on investments, Betty, page four, going down, down to 45,000?
Uh, yes, sir. We're not making a whole lot right now.
Ain't much on them. Thanks don't pay much, do they?
You can borrow cheap, you're not going to make much money.
They going to charge you to keep your money.
There you go. That's right. All right, page five, anything on page five? That's the total numbers there. Okay? All right.
Charlie, I've got a quick question.
Okay.
That on page four, the fire code fines. Chief Jordan, on the fire code fines, when, for example, the occupancy on these clubs, when they come in and pay $24,000 or whatever their back taxes are due, where do those, where does that money go to? Do you know?
All goes into general fund.
Goes to general fund, but doesn't go, but I guess it should go in that code, Betty.
It's a general fund line item, but it goes somewhere else. Pam, do you remember right off the top of your head where those proceeds actually go in? It's in this budget, but it's not in that line item. If not, we can get that information, and I'll give it to you. I don't know off the top of my head.
It'd be better if it went in that line item.
I was just curious.
So what is it, hold on before you leave, Chief. What, what income did it show here with that fire code fine? What's that $1,200? Ms. Betty?
Oh, I'm sorry.
What income is shown here? What did that $1,200 go to?
Oh, that's what I said, I'm going to have to look into that. When it gets down to that small amount, I don't look at the detail. I just take the information that's given to me, saying that this is what we expect to come in, okay?
That's the projected number.
And then I have a question. I didn't inquire about this, but since it was brought up, and I got an email about it, about that fire truck that was rented out, where does that funding go?
General fund.
So it goes in the general fund?
Yes, yes, ma'am. It's an ordinance, and I've been, last three or four weeks, been kind of interrupting my Alabama town. And it's an ordinance, 2012, that was put in per the administration at that time, and all those fees that you saw with the fire truck and all that, it goes in the general fund. It does not come to the fire department, it goes to the general fund, per council. That's one of the things, in 2012, I think, Jenright, remember? The council demanded that.
They just forget, over time, how we got that set up, but that's, that's understandable. But the, the reality of all of that was that video that just really looked weird, you know?
It did. That was the first time it happened, but then those kind of things happen a lot, but for some particular reason, that sparked interest, unlike some other interests that when fire trucks is out, no one says anything about it.
Yeah, but, but when you get it on Facebook, everybody wants to talk. You know how Facebook is.
Right. I think it was the underlying reason why it became a big thing.
It did exactly what it was. It wouldn't have been a problem, hadn't been Facebook.
And along with some other things.
And the last question, who sets the fees on those? Like, what's the red on fee? Is that set by the fire station?
We got those, $450 an hour, I think that's the federal guideline for apparatus and for personnel.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, Chief, one more quick question. How much do you guys estimate you've done in fines and forfeitures and that sort of stuff over the last year?
With the first couple of years, we collected more than about $300,000. But the last about six, seven years, I think is around about $250,000 a year.
That's interesting. Thank you, Chief.
Yes.
Okay. Page seven. Any questions about page seven?
Page seven?
Yeah, six and seven is the same.
Page seven.
Hold on. Charlie, uh, Ms., Ms. Beville, you said you was going to get us those numbers for what the, uh-huh, the fire codes and stuff. You going to get those numbers to us?
Yes, I got a note right here.
Oh, you have a?
No, I have a note to get that information for you.
Very good.
Okay.
On page seven, I had a question. The mayor's salaries went, went up a good bit, but I understand you just moved, moved, people were in different departments, you moved them over there?
Uh, yes, sir, that's correct. And we're trying to make sure that everybody that, wherever their department is, that person is...
That's where they pay at.
Right. But they were paid from other departments, because they weren't already in the budget at the beginning.
Any other question on page seven?
What, what departments they came from, Ms. Beville?
This is the mayor, well, this is just one of them, the mayor's department. There were three positions that were not being paid out of his budget in the current fiscal year, that will be in his department the next fiscal year.
And what departments were they coming from? What, what departments?
You mean where the salaries were?
Uh-huh.
Uh, we had it set up in a project fund, like 437, a project, and I think one of them may have been out of finance, wasn't it? It was what?
So these aren't new position, these positions that are already, somebody's been hired?
Okay. Yeah, they're project accounts that we had, had set up where we had the funds at, and they, those two positions were paid out of that project fund. And it's called 0159999. So this year, we moved those two salaries into his actual, well, three salaries into his department, okay?
So these are positions that people are already working for the city of Montgomery?
Yes, ma'am. They are.
Any other questions? Page eight. Any question on page eight? Going to page nine. Finance department. Now, I say you reduced your salaries, but you moved some of that to like, you, you got another department you set up, or you separated one of your departments?
Okay, yes, sir. It was procurement.
Yeah, you moved that out.
It is, it was a division within the finance department, and it's now a department.
Okay. Anybody? Going to page nine, going over to page 10. Any questions on page 10? Betty, the fringe benefits, I saw on some of these, they're running 45, 48%, 51% of the payroll. That's, that's amazing how high that is. Now, that health, the pension, the insurance gone up a good bit?
Oh, yes, and the retirement.
Insurance and retirement's, what, 19%?
For the city's part of the industry, do you have the exact number on that one? Yes.
21.5 million, 21%?
21.58%.
Percent. Almost 22% then.
So it went up as well as the health insurance. So fringe is...
And the health insurance went up too. They were, we're sitting some high numbers on fringes now. Okay. All right, page 11.
Betty, on, on page 10, information technology, looks like that, we lose somebody, that went down, didn't it?
It did, because there was a division in that department called the radio shop. They will move over to the director of EMA, because that was a better fit for them. So her budget will go up, and you'll notice that, whereas the IT departments came down.
Good deal. That's great, that's a great move.
Thanks.
All right. Anything else on 11? Going to 12. Here's your procurement that you picked up out of finance, right? On page 12?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. So you're saying that was a department that was, they were already in finance, and you're just pulling them out, is what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am. They're now a department rather than a division within finance.
But you're hiring some people new, right?
No, we moved those people over, and they actually lost two positions, because we closed the warehouse. Well, it will be closed as of 9:30 of this month. We had an employee that we lost to the COVID virus, and we only had two employees working in the warehouse, and the other employee was moved to another department. So that caused their budget to even go down a little bit more.
Because when I'm looking at procurement, it's running...
338,000 is what's...
Yeah, but when I look at, when I look at finances, I don't see you drop that much money to equate that whole...
It won't be dollar for dollar.
It won't be dollar for dollar, because reality, that you get the raise in finance offsets all this stuff. So your raise in finance only exists if people change that number too. So your raise in finance only exists with people, change that number too. So it.
That's a whole big number though. That ain't no.
Well, you, you pulled down two hundred thousand on finance. You go back, look at finance. Finance is down.
Two hundred and forty.
Two hundred and forty thousand.
No, 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 no.
How much is it?
What, finance salaries now total?
Finance is down.
Forty-six.
It's even with, with two thousand twenty number.
Finance is down a hundred and fifty-seven.
Yeah.
So then you put the increase in there.
Yeah, but there's no increase in there. So if you had, if you had your increase on top of that two hundred and twenty, two hundred, two, two point four million, you had the increase on there, you probably five, five hundred thousand dollars. With all the people got financed.
No, I see that. I see no other department.
Well, you, you pull them out though. You go look at how these numbers are going up on salaries.
Salary's gonna go up in every department.
Salaries and benefits are going up a lot. That's the thing I have a problem with. But yeah, I just, nothing we do about it, cause that's what, that's pure cost. All right, number twelve, procurement, number thirteen. Number thirteen, grants department. Now, that, that in your, that's your department too?
Yes sir, that's under my oversight. Uh, we're expecting to have, um, three to four employees there. The first employee has been hired, uh, the grants coordinator. And there's gonna be a grant administrator and possibly, uh, two grant accountants.
Okay, so we, we're gonna go big time at the grants.
We are going.
And we just had a meeting with the council talking about grants at the federal level for, uh, add properties in the city. You know, how we could get grants to clean them up.
Well, I'm really pleased that the young lady that has come on board with us as the grants coordinator, she was with the DECA.
Okay.
So she knows grants, she knows single audits, and she has been, she has been earning her pay.
Pay for herself.
Yes.
Will the council have access to say we see grants that we wanna use in our department, within our communities, and we be able to have this department help us?
Sure. I don't see a problem with that.
That's where we, we gotta, that's where she's gonna go look for things that you need.
So she's looking for.
That's what we needed, we needed all along.
Ain't nobody looking for none.
Well, they didn't have anybody. It's a new department.
Come on, work with it y'all, work with it. We got people at the city of Montgomery know how to write grants. Come on, we ain't just not, we ain't just not hiring somebody who can write a grant. People been doing that. And I'm just saying, let's be real, cause I have stuff in my district need to be done. I don't have time for the pancake in the plane. Let's talk real deal, cause I need it done in District Four. I don't know where no other district at and what y'all need, but District Four needs stuff.
Let's, let me ask you a question, Chip.
Mrs. Graham.
Where else do we do grants in the city right now?
She is looking for grants citywide.
Huh?
I couldn't hear you.
Where else in the city do we have someone that writes grants?
Uh, there was a time when we had any number of departments doing it and.
But you tell them we don't now?
That's right. We centralized it as we did procurement.
Desmond Wilson Department.
Desmond, what's Desmond do? What's Desmond's operation do?
HUD, they're doing HUD and home.
They do HUD and that.
Still grants.
No one, this, this department is being set up to be as creative as possible in going out and getting grant money.
To go after new grants.
Right, instead of leaving every department to their own devices. We want to centralize that. Same reason we set up a procurement department. Because we had everyone doing their own contracting for services.
So we can go straight to the grants department and ask for grants to be done.
Chip said come to him and let him make the determination. Now that's what he said.
Betty just said come to her.
Now, but let's talk about it, cause I don't wanna get into no problems once we get beyond this. And then it's, I gotta go to Chip.
Chip, which way we going? Come to you or go to Betty?
You can communicate with Betty and she'll communicate with me. It'll work out.
Okay.
I'm good.
We wanna make sure, we wanna make sure we use that because there's, as you know, you, I don't know where you were on that call or not. I think Betty was on the call, where we talked to the lobbyists in Washington about all the grants available and Audrey's excited, I'm excited. Because we know we got money up there we could get that could fix a lot of problems we got here.
Right.
With all this blighted property we got. And we're just letting it sit on. So that grant writer, we're, I'm excited to hear that we got one because we need that money to do some work.
Yes sir, that's why we set it up.
Okay?
And she's applying for everything that she has looked at out there so far.
I think that's a good idea, centralize it. I really do.
Yeah, that's good. Get one, one place, we know where the buck stops that way, don't we? All right, Department of Violence Prevention, what in the world's that? Where'd that come from?
How many employees are gonna be in that, or personnel are gonna be in that department?
I wanna know what they do first. Huh?
We're looking at six positions for that, uh, department.
And what in the world they gonna do? They work for police department?
Can, can y'all, can y'all hear me?
I'm sorry, say that again?
What department they follow up on? What, what, what's the purpose? What are they doing?
I'm gonna defer to, um.
Let me explain that.
Mr. Hill.
Who's on line? I, I don't hear.
Oh, you can't hear?
Somebody calling in?
Okay, speaking to your mic, he's having a difficult time hearing what the question is.
I'm sorry.
The question is, what is the Department of Violence Prevention? What's their purpose and what are they be doing? And who do they follow up on it?
Correct. Can you hear me? This is Steve.
The mayor's on the line somewhere?
Oh, that's the mayor. I didn't know who that was.
Hello?
Go ahead, mayor. Mr. Mayor, tell us. We don't see you, we don't.
The mayor's on.
The mayor's on phone.
Yes, I'm sorry. Uh, um, if you can hear me, I'll try to be brief. The Office of Violence Prevention came out of initiative of the National League of Cities that was found to be very helpful in being proactive in reducing, uh, violent crime across the country. So we benchmarked several cities, uh, from Milwaukee to Camden, New Jersey, uh, to Oakland to Newark, New Jersey. And we thought this was a great, uh, department to initiate outreach to our neighborhoods with people from the neighborhoods. Uh, to try to interrupt some of the retaliation, some of the things that we've seen in the last three or four days, to be honest with you. Uh, and also to try to bring some of the programs and initiatives that many of us at the city know about, and many of us in the county, uh, and the state know about, but just aren't getting out to the neighborhoods. And so the Office of Violence Prevention is designed to, uh, report to, uh, the chief of staff. And it is designed to be staffed with people from the neighborhoods to bring services, uh, information, as well as, um, to bring back things to the police that we may need to help, uh, be proactive in reducing, uh, gun violence and, and other forms of violence. Camden, New Jersey has seen tremendous success from this over the last, uh, eight to ten years. Uh, other parts of New Jersey and, uh, Milwaukee have as well. And that's what this department is set up for, is to work in partnership with the police. So as the police are reacting, the Office of Violence Prevention, uh, is designed to be proactive. Uh, and going out to the neighborhoods and going out to the communities, a little bit different than neighborhood services because, uh, we want them to be directly involved with things that happen in the streets, with conflicts, with things that are leading to, uh, shootings that we're seeing, much less the murders, uh, that we're seeing across the city.
So, so it's gonna be six individuals from among the community to bring back to the chief of staff what's going on in the communities? Is that kinda a summary of what you said, mayor?
Well, they will report to the chief of staff, which over reports to me. So all, all of this will report, reports to me.
They then report to the police department?
I'm sorry?
It does not report to the pla, to the police department, not a part of the police department?
No, it is not.
Is this supposed to be a substitute for the police department?
No sir, it, it works in partnership with the police department. There are things that the police, uh, can do, uh, obviously within their purview. And there are things that the Office of Violence Prevention, not to go out and arrest somebody, not a citizen's arrest, uh, type of situation. This is an office that is designed to, uh, be on the ground and be in places and spaces, working day in and day out to not only, uh, bring information back, but really designed to interrupt the habit of violence that plays many communities. And in many cases, many small circles within the community, less than ten percent. Um, and so it's designed to show them some of the programs and projects that we are funding, whether it be workforce development, whether it be re-skilling initiatives, things that we know about, that we talk about, that just aren't reaching these guys and it's not, or these ladies. And it's not just in Alabama, it is across the country. And so, uh, these are people that the city will hire, um, to really go back, who are familiar with the community, who are familiar with some of the leaders in the community, to try to get some of these, uh, people on the right path, so they can see opportunity and some, they can see hope. So it's not designed to be a intel project. What we get back, we'll bring back. But it's designed really to try to show some of these folks that are in, uh, marginalized places and that are on the line, what opportunities there are, what programs and initiatives we have. Everything from daycare, childcare, to workforce programs, to how they can get on the bus, how they can get reimbursed for certain services. It is all of those things in one. If you wanted to, if I wanted to put it under a broader category, you might say social services. Uh, but it's a more direct line than what we see from, you know, the Helping Families Initiative, or what we may see from another nonprofit. It is designed to interrupt, uh, the pattern of violence that impacts a small segment of communities across cities nationwide. And, uh, it is being found to be impactful, and it's been found to be very, uh, effective. And that's why we think that, given the people who we've been working with in the last eighteen, twenty months, uh, can be helpful along with some who already have experience in terror.
Okay, anybody got any questions on the mayor?
Yes, I have one question. Mayor, on these six employees, I would like, if, if possible, the job description of these six employees. And I know they're report to the mayor's office and the chief of staff, and I know we're creating a new department, so I want to know exactly. I heard what you're saying. I needed your job description of these six. Are we gonna have a director? What they gonna be doing? Because I wanna see how do this affect with the community policing? Cause it sounds like the same thing that we're talking about when we talk about community policing, which.
Uh-uh, two, two, no, uh, no, let me, let me real quick, real quick. Two different things. So the community policing is more so, uh, you know, kind of after the fact, right? If there is an issue that is brought up, somebody wants to challenge, uh, shooting that may have taken place last month, or an issue with an officer, and it is heard, you know, you have a board. You have a citizen review board. That's after the fact. These are full-time employees that again will be worked at, and, uh, to your point, a director, an assistant director, outreach coordinator, an administrator. And I forgot the other two titles, but we, we can certainly show you those. But they are working, you know, forty hours at least a week, every day to, uh, again, try to connect dots with people who are on the margins. And we've done a lot of listening, uh, more so than we have talking, uh, with mayors and council members in other cities where they've been doing this for well over a decade. And there've been, you know, uh, some stories that have not worked out as well, and people have had to retool their program. And then there've been, uh, you know, many more success stories that people can point to and say, hey, here's what we did well. For instance, they didn't hire people with master's degrees, uh, from the local university to go out and be, they brought in people from the neighborhood, people from the little people with records, people with felony. They brought in people that had street cred, if I can put that in layman's terms. So the point is, you know, the police can only get so far because regardless of where we are, there's still a fear, or there's distrust of the uniform. When you bring in people, uh, that are working, um, from the neighborhood, that have come through some of the same communities, off the same streets, that are trying to turn, uh, their life around and are telling other people, here's how you can do it. Here's the programs, here's what they will pay you to do, here's how you get reimbursed. Then we're able to interrupt, uh, that, that pattern. And what we're trying to do is to partner with the police being, you know, reacting to crime, to really trying to get out there and get ahead of it. We know there's some beef.
We got you, mayor. We, we appreciate the input. I think we got enough information now to make a decision on that.
But I, I can get to the job description.
Okay, Mr. Calhoun asked for some stuff. It'd be great to have that information.
Yeah, we just talk, let's talk some more about that as we come. We're not gonna pass it today, so as we go forward, let's talk about that, cause I'm interested in that department.
Okay.
Let's go through rest of port, rest of port, city, city events, on that page fourteen, go to page fourteen. Anything about city events that's reduced in salaries, so we've got somebody move somewhere, okay?
What happened there?
Parks and Recreation.
Parks and Rec move somebody.
Yes, some of those employees were moved to Parks and Rec.
Okay, Food Department, right, okay. All right, let's go to page fifteen, city clerk. Oh, city clerk.
No comments.
No comment. Come right on Bassett Municipal Court?
Hey, yes, I have some question about municipal court. We talked about this in budget hearings. Um, it was about the bailiffs. We was looking at reclassifying those bailiffs from, is Ken here? Come on, let's talk about that. We talked about that, and I wanted to know, cause I think finance is supposed to be getting the information of what it would cost to tran, change them from administrative positions to the public safety. So do we have those numbers on, on what we're talking about to do that? Because that is something, you know, I know we say they're not public safety, but they're out serving warrants from what I understand. When I see them, they look like police officers and they're black. So the, the public don't know the difference. When you're carrying a weapon and you out on the street, they assume that you, public safety. So where are we at on, on, on getting that classification and getting that change for those six or seven employees in the municipal court?
Well, I've had no additional communication about that since the.
Uh, that ain't my fault.
Well, I'm simply saying, they're simply bailiffs now, post-certified officers. That's a decision that has to be made administratively.
Well, I need some information on that decision that we discussed in budget hearings. Where are we at with it? Where are we at on, on, where are we going forward and what's the cost? Six. I mean, I, I need that information, cause that, that's something real sincere, and I met with those, those, those employees about that. And it's something that's been going on five, ten, fifteen years. And, and they feel like they're being left out, whether it's the retirement, but they feel like they're out on the streets and, and they're serving warrants, they're doing those things, and people perceive that they're law enforcement. So we need to accommodate them and do the things that we need to do. And I'm not gonna overlook them in this budget coming up.
Well, there, and just, just to be clear, there's six, um, there's one bailiff, five assistant bailiffs.
Okay.
That work for the municipal court. Um, at any given time, two are out on the street. Which is, I, I just want you to make sure you understand that. They're not all out on the street.
No, not, but when they're out, the perception is that they're law enforcement.
And I just didn't want you to think all six of them are out on.
No, no, I understand. Someone working the court. I just wanna do my due diligence. I asked for those numbers of what it would cost in this budget to make that change.
Do they have to change their, their classification with personnel? Is what they need to do, do you think?
I'm gonna let the administration figure that out.
Councilman Calhoun, what I will tend to, tend to do tomorrow is what their current salaries are.
Yes sir.
I will research what a police officer, an entry-level police officer makes. Someone else is gonna have to answer the retirement question. I, I can't answer that.
I just needed that information. Thank you. That's all, that's all I wanted to know. Cause we asked that and I don't want, I didn't go to sleep on it, so it was on my mind, so I was on my notes.
Good deal.
Hey Ken, real quick question. Did they go through our training program, our fourteen or sixteen week, these bailiffs? Did they go through the same thing that?
They are post-certified officers. Uh, now, where, I think majority of them have gone through the Montgomery Police Department, a lot of agencies around the state, the way I understand. A lot come through Montgomery Police Department training to gain that post certification.
They have to have, be post-certified to be a bailiff?
They, they do have to be post-certified.
So they went through training somewhere, whether us or somewhere?
Correct, correct. And, and I, I can find that out too, exactly where they obtained.
I was just curious if they had to do the same thing?
Yeah, they did the same thing, same training. Most of them are retired police officers, people that was in the police department that's now working as bailiff.
Okay.
Thank you sir.
Thank you, mister.
All right, going to legal, page sixteen, legal. Anything, question on legal? Page sixteen, page seventeen. Page seventeen, investigations. Any question on that? Going to page eighteen. Planning. Looks pretty normal. Going to page nineteen. Page nineteen. Community development.
This, Desmond Wilson Department. And planning is, uh, Mr. Phil.
Right. All right. Going to page nineteen, page twenty, page twenty, economic development. Economic development's a new, new, new department. Now, when they, we set that up in the, uh.
I thought that was a office, not a department.
Economic development is an officer, yeah. And it's a department, it got all these things under it, so.
Betty, how many?
I'm sorry?
How many employees?
In that, uh, we have positions for, uh, two.
Two, two employees?
On economic development?
That's number thirty-six.
Yes, they both go out and recruit.
Yeah, they both go look, look, you don't have anybody in that position now, do you? There's nobody in that position now. Okay, it just opened up a position. Okay, it is, it is in the chart.
And how many, and how many employees gonna be in that department?
We have budget for two, for FY twenty-two.
And they're gonna be two new people, right?
Two, it's two new positions.
Nobody, okay.
Charlie, I have a question, I have a question.
All right.
What is the difference between this economic development department and the chamber?
I, I can speak to that if you can hear me.
Okay. Go ahead, mayor.
Um, councilor, councilor Pruitt, the, the economic development director that we want to do is, is one that will focus on the, uh, development of the entire city. Uh, what the chamber has been set up to be is a membership-driven organization that does a lot of great, uh, recruitment, but probably does not get into some of the grunt work, if you will, of basic economic development. So the way we set it up, and y'all voted to approve the, uh, the position, was community development, planning, inspections would all report to the, the economic development, uh, director. And so the goal there is to make sure that the city's economic development acting in partnership with the chamber. What we had, you know, previously, we had kinda people kinda doing the dual role within the city. Uh, but what we found in, you know, probably the first period in the administration is, uh, other cities had a solely dedicated in-house economic development arm along with their business alliance, along with their chamber that was doing external things. So, uh, when we look at things that we talk about, whether it's zoning, whether it's planning, whether it's how do we, uh, incentivize, uh, you know, certain corridors of the city? How do we, uh, better draw, uh, retail or draw commercial development to other, uh, neighborhood corridors? How do we revive them? Those are things that the chamber, you know, doesn't do, because they're, they're focused on larger projects and other initiatives, and rightfully so. This person would be doing the grunt work of working with our planning department, our community. community development department, as well as our inspections, to make sure that things are running on time and to make sure that things are going, uh, in line with the initiatives that, that we see as a city that need to be addressed. And, and we think it's a very, uh, important, you know, position to have along with what the chamber already does.
Let me, let me input, Matt McLeod did that in the last administration.
I was thinking that.
And, and it, and it, it's developing retail property downtown, whatever, it's very needed.
So, Mayor, we're gonna have to get somebody with experience, correct?
Right. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Cal.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
So what this would be, Glenn, kind of like that Boulevard, with someone to come in and help us with that?
Sounds good.
That would be the person, lead up, lead, lead the charge. Okay, landfill?
Have we, wait a minute, have we started recruiting for this department yet?
It's already closed.
It's in, it's in the process of interviewing.
Okay, landfill, anybody question about landfill? Go to engineering, forty-two, any question on engineering? Inspections, page twenty-two, item number forty-three. Fleet management, item forty-eight.
Street management.
Excuse me. Fleet management, uh, page twenty-three, page twenty-three, I'll scroll down. Any questions on page twenty-three? Going to page twenty-four. Betty, I figured the fringe benefits on sanitation?
Yes, sir.
Fifty-six percent? That looks weird. Danny, what y'all doing? Y'all got double-
Years of service.
Something, years of ser, I don't know what is that? Amazing, fifty-six percent, though, you figured the number.
Did you include the overtime in with the salaries?
No, I did not. I just said fifty-three thou, fifty-five point three million in fringe benefits divided by nine point four million in salaries, and I get fifty-six percent.
You're still gonna be looking at, and we actually have spreadsheets and all, it's in our system that does the calculation for us.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying that we probably need to check that. It looks, it looks kind of high.
I got a, I got a-
It should be correct.
I have a question for Dan. Dan, y'all, I understand in that bond issue, we gave, got, bought thirty, was it thirty trucks? What was it, Betty?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, did we get all those?
Probably haven't got any of them yet. We can't hear you.
It's okay, I, so you didn't get them, and you won't get them to April, right?
You give them in April, that's it.
How many are gonna get in April five?
Twenty-one.
No, we won't get all of them.
Yeah, you won't get all of them.
Yeah, we, uh, we split that truck order up into four different POs to battle delays in manufacturing. Now, you may or may not know-
I'm, I'm aware of it.
-issues with, uh, integrated chips. Shortage on, so that's got a lot of things delayed. So we, uh, in order to kind of battle that, rather than put all of our eggs in one basket, we split the order up into four different groups, and hopefully we're gonna be able to get some trickling in. But realistically, we're probably looking at March or April.
Okay.
It's not good, because that's one of the issues that we battle every day. It's either personnel shortage or equipment, and we deal with that on a daily basis.
Okay.
So this budget gets you to full capacity with personnel?
Say again, I'm sorry.
This budget would get you to full capacity with personnel?
Yes, uh, I believe what's included in here, I, I requested ten additional sanitation truck drivers in part two.
Okay.
And fifteen service maintenance workers.
Okay.
Now, included in this, correct me if I'm wrong, Betty, but I think it's seven.
You got seven sanitation truck drivers and seven service maintenance workers.
Right, in addition to what we had already funded. So that's gonna put us in great shape personnel-wise.
That's good.
The only issue we got is recruitment and hiring. We're having a hard time, even now, I've been trying to man up for three months. I'm finally up to two forty-three, but it's up and down. You know, we'll hire a group, and we'll have a group of leaders. So I'm trying very hard to get manned up.
These new salaries would go into effect October one?
That should help.
Yeah, we'll help.
October one, the ten percent on the admin grade, nineteen percent on the service grade is gonna help in recruitment, it's gonna help in retention as well.
Okay, good deal. Thank you.
Dan, did you, Dan, did you just say how many, how many, you're at two forty-three now?
As of today, I'm at two forty-three.
What do you, what do you got, what do you got total budgeted?
Say again?
What do you got your total budget set at, number of people?
Number of people? This year, we've got two hundred and thirty-seven, I believe, in twenty-one. Now, with, with that-
What do we, what do we have, what do we have budgeted this year, the total number of employees you're asking for in this budget?
I believe it's two hundred and thirty-seven in that, in that part one, and then I added an additional-
Fifteen.
Additional fifteen.
I have a question, Dan, is, is that, and I know I hear you saying you have a difficult time retaining them, but is that, is that number a good number? Because this council gets numerous, and, you know, I've talked to you, we're, we're behind on picking up trash.
Well, when you say a good number, when you say a good number, there's some factors that play into that. You gotta fin, figure about ten percent just for general absentees when everything is normal. So that takes ten percent off the top, and then you throw some COVID absentees, and then we're also working our employees pretty hard. Uh, on top of that, we have people that are maxed out on leave time that you've got to let take off. So we're dealing with scheduled absences and non-scheduled absences, including an uptick in COVID. So, like today, I had thirty, uh, thirty-two employees on, uh, either unauthorized leave, which means no call, no show, scheduled sick, when you include callouts. Also, there were three COVID-related. Uh, we've still got a couple of positive individuals that are off. We've got some that are, that have been exposed off the job, that are out of precaution, they're taken off. So we're still dealing with attendance issues on top of, you know, routine, uh, routine absences that we got scheduled. So two thirty-seven is not a bad number, as long as our attendance is good.
That's not a good number either.
When you run more than ten percent, that's not good.
And it, hang on one second, Ed, and I know this is gonna catch you off guard, but I would love to see what we had budgeted in two seventeen or two sixteen, the number of employees. Because pre-COVID, let me finish this real quick.
Yes, I can.
Pre-COVID, there wasn't a lot of things that we did right in the city, but one of the things we did right is sanitation. I mean, we never got complaints. And now, since COVID, I mean, it's every Wednesday, I'm getting phone calls from different neighborhoods, we're picking the cans up, but we're not picking the trash up on the side.
I agree, I agree, I get those complaints as well.
And so do we need to take that number from two forty to two seventy to factor in that ten percent that's staying up?
I don't think at this time, I think what we've done over the years, we've manned down because of budgeting, we've manned down, you know, water finds its own level. I think we have found our level, and we don't need to go below that.
But Dan, this le, this level ain't working.
Well, it, it might work though.
This whole council, this level ain't working.
Yeah, but Glenn, Glenn, let me, let me interrupt you. With the increase in salary, it should slow this turnover down.
It should, yeah.
I've seen in, in other businesses I've involved with, when you raise the salaries, your turnover rate goes way down if you do the proper thing.
Yeah.
And you're, you're able to hire a better, hire good people.
One of the things that we've done in sanitation, also, Glenn, is we've used temps during the busy season, manned down during the off-season, so we've been able to man up, just like we do in street maintenance during the grass coating season. We man up with temps, we also work inmate labor. Uh, like today in street maintenance, we've got five, uh, state inmates that were working cleaning ditches and doing other grass coating duties. Now, that number varies, sometimes we get ten, sometimes it's five. It's kind of unreliable, it may change from day to day. But we do that in sanitation as well, during the growing season, uh, during the summer, we man up with temps. The problem now is, is not budgetary, is finding candidates that we can hire. One, that'll come in for an interview, they're actually looking for a job, and then those that will pass the drug test. And we're running about a third of what we send for a drug test that fail it. And then after we put those on, on, uh, the job, the job is so tough that probably about twenty-five percent doesn't make it. They either just don't show up anymore, or they resign because the work is too hard. So we're dealing with that too, and that's, that's creating some of the coming and going as far as personnel goes.
And maybe, maybe I just don't, and I don't wanna beat that horse, Dan.
I tell you, probably, Glenn, probably, just trying to work from memory, fifteen years ago, we probably had three hundred employees.
Wow.
Three hundred or better.
And, and we're at two forty-three today, you said you've got two thirty-seven or something in the budget?
Two thirty-seven in the budget, and then we're, we're gonna be able to hire an additional fourteen, uh, funded, I should say. And there, finance is generally pretty flexible with us. Uh, Angie, which is the gatekeeper of the budget, uh, hiring and that sort of thing, she's pretty, uh, she works with us pretty well. When we get ready to man up, uh, she, she runs a tight ship, I'll tell you. But when we get ready to man up, we can generally work with her if we need to run over songs. But it's a trade-off, because when the workload reduces, we reduce that, that manning stream. So we know how to manage it, we've been doing it long enough, we can manage it.
No, I, I, listen, I agree, but it, it, it's-
Glenn-
I don't, I don't really agree, Glenn.
He, he, here's the, here's the problem, talking to a guy today in Atlanta that manages a big bonding company, contractors, and he's got a bunch of subs going broke, because they can't meet deadlines, because they can't get any workers. Dan, your job, y'all's job is very similar to construction. Nobody wants to do that kind of work right now. I mean, that's just the, the nature of the beast.
And listen, Ed, you're right, but we either need to put more people in the budget and let him go hire them, or we need to start talking about one day a week, Charlie, because this council-
I think, I think that's where you're coming to, is, where you're going in future.
Because, you know, we have, we have increased-
I mean, I think we got, I mean, I just, on the table today, we've got a situation where we know that we got more money to hire people. You gotta see if that works. If that doesn't work, we gotta go to plan B and decide if we're gonna go to one day a week, or what we're gonna actually do to accommodate the needs that we got. I mean, because reality of it, the work deal is changing a lot.
I mean, does the, does the, does the fourteen truck drivers that we're gonna hire, if you hired them tomorrow, and they all show up-
It's not fourteen truck drivers though.
Well, it's not, it's not fourteen additional truck drivers, it's seven additional truck drivers.
Seven and seven or something else.
And seven.
All right, so if they all show up tomorrow, Wednesday, do we get a phone call that curbside has not picked up the following Wednesday? Does those fourteen people make everything go back to the way we used to be?
No.
Then we need to figure something out.
No, it's gonna be a combination of things, it's gonna be equipment too. So soon-
I think we got two questions here, I think you get, if you get the people, then you gotta decide if you're gonna have to go a different way of looking at it.
Okay, the employee count, Glenn, you asked, twenty sixteen, we have two hundred and fifty-nine funded, twenty seventeen, two hundred and forty-eight, and then, of course, twenty twenty-two is, uh, we got two hundred and forty-two.
I think we need to get back to that two fifty-nine. I think that's a good number. I agree with Glenn, that there is, there's definitely an issue with it. I mean, if we have a storm come through, y'all three, y'all a whole month behind trying to get the people, because it's just-
Exactly. Yeah, I've been through a couple of hurricane cleanups, and I can tell you, it's an ordeal.
Does that number, is that two fifty, is that two forty, two, two fifty-one, or whatever it is, number, does that include street maintenance also?
No.
How many you got there?
Got a hundred and forty-two there to date.
Okay, so you moved those around? Some of those have been moved to sanitation too, haven't they?
No, I've, I've put some of them on trash detail.
Okay, with sanitation.
Some of the tree crew and, uh, some of those maintenance guys, they work trash just about every day.
Okay.
So there's other stuff, Charlie.
Yeah.
That, that's not getting done because you had to move it.
I understand, I understand, Ed, it's all, it's, the street maintenance got the same issue, he's got.
But, street maintenance, I will say this, we were cutting nine employees last year to meet the budget, and that's been added to this year, we've refunded those nine positions.
So you're back in full, full cap.
So we, we recovered those nine on top of a hundred and forty-two.
Dan, is it easier to hire in street maintenance? Is it easy, is it easier to hire in street maintenance than sent?
It's a different type job.
Right.
Uh, it's not quite as agile, uh, you don't need someone as quite as in good physical shape.
Okay.
Because their, their job, but most of their work is at job sites, and there is not as strenuous on. Probably the hardest job is gonna be cutting drainage ditches with weed-eating. That's a hard job.
Uh, yeah. Can we round up those things with some aquatic roundup?
Well, they do, they do some herbicide spray, they don't do a lot, but they-
Do we, do we still do some herbicides?
We still do some, a very minimal.
Why, why did we quit, or we just?
I, I can't answer that, that was before my involvement with street maintenance.
Okay. Charlie, that would help some.
Oh, yeah, I think that, well, that-
We still have a chemical work supervisor that is in charge of, of that, so.
Can, can we get somebody in the budget for, that can spray?
Well, I think that if he needs it, he's got, he's got a nine million dollar budget, okay?
He just puts nine more people in.
He's licensed. He got nine and a half million dollars in his budget to spend for this stuff, and that doesn't, that's just sanitation, that doesn't go with street maintenance itself. Okay?
Dan, thank you.
Street maintenance got another six and a half million dollars in street maintenance.
Yeah, mate.
So.
Where, where, where we're hurting in, in sanitation is the yard trash.
Yeah.
We're able to manage the garbage pickup, we haven't missed a lick on it, pulled up in the very canyon. The problem is, we have to spend too much time on garbage pickup, because we work overtime every day. Uh, and we don't have enough time, because those same employees are responsible for the trash pickup.
Danny, let me ask you a question. Are we still at real high number on the amount of trash we're picking up? Is it double like it has, has been in last year, or is it taping off?
The weights, generally speaking, we're gonna, sanitation is gonna average about five hundred ton a day.
And is that what we were doing in two thousand and nineteen?
Well, we went up during the pandemic. When everybody was at home, we probably went up to seven and eight at times.
So where we at now?
We're now back at about five hundred tons.
Okay, go back to kind of normal.
Kind of a normal range, still somewhat high, but, yeah, during the summertime, you find that anyway.
But another thing I think happened too, is all your equipment got beat up so bad when you went to that, that high number.
Yes.
You ran it, so you ran it so hard.
Saturday pickup, oh, those drop-off ones are tough on.
Okay, all right.
Dan-
Well, you got the money to do what you gotta do, and you-
I got one other question.
All right, go ahead.
On the street pickup, do you pick up everything? I see sofas-
No, sir, we, you know, there's an ordinance forty-eight dash eighty-four that, that governs what we pick up. Some things there are charged for. So long as, say, for example, tree limbs, so long as they're shorter than four feet length, and smaller than eight inches in diameter, you can put that out, and we'll pick that up on, on a routine basis. You get over that size, then we're gonna levy a charge, and that's based on a hundred and fifty dollars a twenty-two cubic yard truck load. Now, other items, like furniture appliances, there's a twenty-five dollar per item charge.
We should probably go up on that.
What, what, what impact do, do you see on what the landlords and evictions, where they put an entire house of furniture out? Well, I've, I've had a lot of that in my district.
I think you had one recently, uh, over on, uh, Federal Drive, eight oh four.
Yes.
Our good friend that patrols the city.
Yes.
Generates a lot of work for us. Uh, but, uh, they had, uh, that house, I'll give you a little history on it. That house was stopped two years ago. They were not paying for service. It was, uh, unoccupied. Uh, whoever the landlord was had rental property that they were storing junk in the garage. For whatever reason, they decided to put that out and tried to put it out a little at a time. So, we picked up a couple of smaller loads, uh, there at no charge. But our manager happened to make contact with the owner and tell him, hey, look, you know, we're not gonna continue to do this because it's creating a nuisance. So, we were gonna invoke the, what we call the force pickup rule, which is a seventy-two hour window. Once we leave a notice, we give them seventy-two hours to either pay the original estimate that we give them, or we go ahead and pick it up and add that original estimate plus a hundred and fifty dollar service fee to their bill.
What's that, what's that, what, what is the cost?
Say again?
What is that, the average cost to pick up a curbside like that?
It just depends because we do so much of it. It would be hard to levy a charge on, say, one pile, one truck load. I really wouldn't know how to levy the actual cost.
Hundred and fifty service fee?
Cause you got fuel, you got employees, fringe benefits, I mean, you know, you spread that out. And, uh, really, uh, probably very little. I mean, there would be some cost there, but a hundred and fifty dollars a load plus if you pick up a force pickup, you add another hundred and fifty to it.
That's three.
Then that's quite a bit, quite a bit for a twenty-two cubic yard.
Are we in line with what, what, what it would cost for the occupant or the homeowner to have a dumpster? A twenty-yard dumpster delivered? Cause last time I had one of those, they're like four hundred bucks delivered, filled, and then empty.
And it's been up and down on that. Some of them, some of the contractors didn't have them available. There was so much going on, you couldn't even rent one. But, uh, yeah, I'm not sure about that. I don't know how that compares to dumpster or roll-off rental. I haven't surveyed that. But usually when people have what these people have, I would recommend to get a roll-off. Now, because we're not looking for more work, believe me. At five hundred ton a day, we've got plenty of work.
Thank you, Danny. I appreciate the input. Anybody got any questions?
I do, uh, one question. Um, Mr. Dickey, um, Haver Road has put up this, uh, gate to kind of keep people out from dumping.
Yeah, and that's working, that's, that's working good. That belongs to the, uh, county school board.
Right, right. But, but how have we been doing the Saturday morning pickups? Cause it looked like it's still locked on Saturday mornings. So, have we moved that pickup site?
Yeah, we've moved that one.
What'd you move it to?
Well, you know, we're operating the Court Street drop-off. We combined, we moved Bellingrath. We're not operating the Bellingrath anymore. And we've moved that one, and, and everything's going to either, uh, let's see, I'm trying to think, Harrison School, uh, Harrison, yes, School, it's a church now. We're operating there, and, uh, but we don't have one over on the Haver Road.
Oh, so y'all just stopped that altogether? That's not a site?
Yeah, it was right there where they put the fence up.
Right.
And, uh, yeah, that eliminated that dumping problem, but they're dumping everywhere else. They're dumping down on Green Pine, if you're familiar with where Parker Street, H and R Point. In that area, they're, they're dumping there. Uh, they're finding other areas to dump. Uh, they dumped some. We just cleaned up some stuff across the street. Somebody dumped a mattress in a, in a.
Yeah, that mattress been out there six months. I talked to Chris Conway about that. I appreciate that, and then y'all even cut those ditches. Man, it looks, I didn't even know the sidewalk was there. Y'all, we're able to see the sidewalk now. Wonderful. It looks really, really good down there.
The, the illegal dump sites are secondary. That's not a first or a priority. You know, servicing the citizens is the number one priority, and then we work on the dump sites as we get time. But we probably got five or six regular dump sites that we patrol.
Right. Okay. I just didn't realize y'all had stopped that site. I, I didn't think they were opening it up to let you in there, but I just figured somebody was gonna make contact with them and continue that relationship where they'll open it up on Saturday mornings, but I didn't realize you had stopped that site altogether.
Yeah, they closed it. They had such a problem dumping on, on school property. And really, that's about the only way to eliminate the dumping industry.
Okay, any more?
And it's on all of them. South Lawn has the same problem. They don't, you know, there when they're, when it's not time.
Yeah, just about all those drop-off points we have to patrol.
Okay. Any more questions?
Right.
Okay. Thank you, Danny.
Don't be rushing me.
Thank you.
Let me ask you a question.
You pay overtime after five. That's budget.
Okay. Alright, page twenty-five, traffic engineering. Any questions about traffic engineering?
I just had one.
Yes, ma'am.
Were there any new personnel added to that department?
Traffic personnel?
Two.
I don't know. I filled my notes.
Two new positions.
Two new positions, thanks.
Production controller and a traffic control supervisor.
Yeah, she beat me to it. Those two.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Any more questions on that, traffic engineering? Okay. Going to street maintenance. Any questions on street maintenance? I think Danny kind of covered that. Bayok was twenty-six, page twenty-six.
Man, there's a question.
Is that good? Alright. Alright, going to page twenty-seven, item number sixty-two, police. I understand we got four hundred and ninety officers funded in this budget. Is that correct? And you, four fifty, yeah, I believe. Police was, uh.
We currently have approximately four hundred and fifty-two. Four hundred and fifty-two sworn officers.
At this point?
Yes, sir.
And you got four ninety in the, uh, budget?
Yes, sir. We had to, uh, for this current fiscal year, we had to reduce our amount of sworn officers from five hundred and ten to four hundred and ninety to meet our budget, um, our budget that we were given. And, um, we are hoping with the pay raise beginning in October that we'll be able to have good recruitment when we get back up to four ninety.
Okay. Questions, folks?
I, I have a question, Chief, and was talking to Chief Dean earlier before, before the meeting. Um, and maybe something I want to ask Chief Jordan as well, but he said a lot of cities do bonuses for certified officers that swap, you know, from Prattville to Montgomery and so forth. Would that be worth us doing with this pay increase? Would it be worth doing some sort of quote sign-on bonus, if you will?
If, if we could afford to put that in there, that would be great, anything as a recruiting incentive, um, to get more officers on. Like Lieutenant Gamble mentioned, we reduced it from our five-ten to four-ninety, and we were originally allocated five-twenty-four sworn. The number is attainable. Uh, with the number that we have now, we have upcoming class. We're projecting to start twenty in that class, so that'll bring us up to the, um, four, five, I'm sorry, the four-seventy, around seventy-four, four-seventy-two range. And we run three police academies per year. So, with those three academies, we hope to get ten or fifteen. They're still gonna probably exceed our number. Well, we might have to cap it off if we are only allocated that four-ninety sworn, so I think that is a, a attainable number that we're requesting on it.
How has the, uh, attrition been? Has it, has it slowed down as far as people leaving?
It, it's varying. We, we hope with the new pay increase that we'll have more people. We do see a, a great interest in people that have retired, left the department, that are showing interest in coming back. So, we, we definitely think we'll be able to meet those numbers and probably come back later asking for more on a personnel increase.
Would, would that be nice?
Be good. Any other questions of the police? Any other questions of the police?
Not good.
Alright, page twenty-eight, fire. Question of the fire department?
Charlie, I do.
Yes, sir.
Chief, where, um, their police department's four-fifty-two, and they want to get to four-ninety something. Um, where are you guys at and what are y'all, what are, what is in y'all's budget?
Uh, we are funded for four hundred and seven.
Four, four-seventy?
Four oh seven.
Four oh seven?
Yes, sir.
That's what you budgeted for?
What do you currently have today?
Uh, currently, we have three hundred and eighty-four on the books. Uh, out of the three eighty-four, there's sixty-three that's unavailable. Either they're in training academies, about thirty-eight or thirty-nine. The others is probably got fifteen or more on family medical leave, got four, five, six, seven on military leave. So, there's about sixteen percent of the three eighty-five is not available.
So, you're sitting on three hundred?
So, we've probably got three hundred and twenty-five people to run the city with right now, which is, um, pretty taxing on the personnel that, um, we have. For the first time in thirty-six years, we have reached five million dollars in overtime. And, um, I'm concerned about the money because I know you guys are concerned about the money, but I'm more concerned about my firefighters. Because where you guys and I'm gonna be able to spend Christmas and Thanksgiving, uh, with my family, hopefully, uh, I might have to hold these people over.
And Charlie, that's, and, and Chief, alright, let me ask this question. What I want to say, what's the, what's a, what's a, what's a, uh, magic number? What's, what's, what's an attainable number for next year's budget that the police department can, can get to? And recruitment wise?
Fire.
Fire department, yeah.
Well, I'd like to take that challenge. Um, right now, we have three eighty-five. We have thirty-nine people that's in the applicant pool right now, um, that hopefully, we won't get all of them because people have fought off for different reasons. But we're testing on a regular basis through city kind of personnel, and so, um, four seven, so twenty, four thirty would be a good number. From four twenty-seven to, um, four thirty would be a good number. That would be a good challenge for us to get to.
Charlie, one of the, one of the biggest things, or one of the biggest obstacles that Chief Jordan's have to deal with is the, the amount of work that they're having to do. If they work a twenty-four and they're off forty-eight, um, ninety percent of the time, they're getting held over, and they possibly could get held over again. So, what's happening is, these firemen, and I know personally, are leaving, going to Prattville, Wutumpka, whatever, for less money. But guess what? They get off after that twenty-four hours and then go home and see their family, then go cut their grass or do whatever. So, the problem that the fire department's having is, they're overworked.
Well, I guess, what I hear you say, if you've got, you're funded for four hundred and seven firefighters, and today you only got four, three hundred and twenty-one available to you.
They could actually work.
They actually work.
Yes, we got three eighty-five on the books.
Right.
But sixty-three are not available to you?
Sixty-three is not available.
And that, I think that's the problem you got. You've got somebody not available to you that are for different reasons.
No, sir. Well, we got thirty-nine is in training.
Okay.
Uh, that takes six months to go through the training program. But just like Mr. Dickey said, at any given day, you got family medical leave, uh, you got military leave. Uh, you got all these factors. So, when your numbers are low, they become issues and problems. Our department today should have four hundred and ninety people, and that's not by my estimation. That's by a relief factor that is used to determine your manpower. So, we should have four hundred and ninety people. Uh, back, um, nineteen ninety-nine, we had four hundred and sixty people. Uh, we were doing half the calls that we're doing now, probably twenty-two thousand. Uh, this year, we'll probably reach forty-two thousand calls. And so, we have not kept up with, uh, the demands.
See, you need more than four thirty.
Yeah, I need four ninety.
Four ninety?
Yeah, that would be the perfect number for us, is four hundred and ninety people. Uh, but, like I said.
Charlie, I think, I think this council could put four thirty in the budget, and, you know, we've done it in the past where if he comes back and says, hey, after four thirty, I can, I can get ten, fifteen more people.
How much, how much did it cost you per person?
There's money available.
Per person?
Yep.
On the average, with the new pay scale, I think about sixty thousand dollars per individual that's benefits and salaries.
Okay.
It's about a million and a half dollars, Charlie, two million dollars, million and eight, something like that.
Chief, I got, I got a question. Those thirty-eight in training, are they newbies? They're new trainees? Or are they getting additional training for a different job?
No, these are new trainees.
Okay, so we'll get those out of that at some point.
We have a graduation, which everyone is invited, uh, October the sixth. Uh, that's gonna be fifteen, and then we have a, a graduation the first of the year for the other twenty-something plus.
I, I, I fully understand. I, I had a fireman tell me the other day, he had to pull three in a row, so he died.
No, sir. He didn't have to do three in a row. That's against OSHA requirement. He did two in a row.
Don't say that, Graham. Don't say that.
Fireman will, uh, let me tell you, a fireman will tell you a long tale sometime.
I got you. That's fine.
But it's two in a row.
You ain't never told him, did you, before?
Sir?
You never told Tell when you was a fireman back in the day?
I'm a firefighter.
That's all you had to say.
We, we didn't need to work and get you more people. Alright, thank you.
One, one question. Chief Jordan, what are you guys doing for your, um, recruiting? Are y'all in the, the, the colleges? Are y'all, how do you do for as you're recruiting, trying to get guys?
Absolutely. We own social media. We out on, uh, WCOW SFA. We spending money. We are recruiting. Uh, we've been working with city kind of personnel. They are doing more virtual, uh, recruiting and testing now, which speeds up the process. And matter of fact, because the city kind of personnel, we've gone through maybe four or five registers. We'll have two hundred and fifty people on a register, and only ninety people will take the test. And out of the ninety, only seventy-five will show up. Out of the seventy-five, only forty makes the cut. And then out of the forty, maybe twenty-seven may make the training academy, and out of the twenty-seven, only twenty may graduate.
So, what's the age coming in? Is it eighteen or nineteen?
Eighteen to start.
Chief, out of the IMPACT program, how has that benefited the fire department? I know it benefits the students, but how does it benefit your personnel?
We have hired at least two out of the Montgomery program, and I think maybe three or four out of the Wutumpka program. So, I try to support both programs. Both of them are former firefighters in Montgomery, uh, Johnny George in Montgomery, and, uh, Donnie Adam in Wutumpka.
Thank you.
Hey, one more question, Chief, and I should ask Chief Harris this, but if, if you get a fireman from another city, and I'm gonna ask the same question as Chief Harris, if you get a fireman from Prattville, it comes to you guys, it's already certified or whatever, what training do they go through when they come to you? Do they have to go through the whole program again?
No, sir. They go through like a thirty-day orientation because they already state certified. We have a system set up, um, called a lateral program.
Okay.
And, uh, they go through about a thirty-day, um, orientation to adopt to, adapt to what Montgomery does.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Next page.
Thanks, Chief.
EMA, any questions on EMA?
Yeah, I got.
How many, how many people they hiring new?
They hired, you brought in some people from, you transferred some people from, where did you transfer? Remind me. Where, Betty, where did we, where did we transfer?
I'm sorry, say it again.
EMA, you transferred the radio people over to EMA?
They went to, um, EMA.
From radio.
How many staff did we transfer?
You, you got eight now, and you went up to how many?
Thirteen total.
Thirteen total now because you transferred the others in. Okay.
So, five people transferred, seven hundred thousand dollars.
Man, it should change the budget. Must not have anybody before.
We write on five people transferred into EMA from radio?
I'm sorry, you did what?
Five, eight people total?
Eight people from the radio shop went over to EMA.
I need to go work at a radio shop.
Some of them been there a long time.
Okay, alright, I see.
Their salaries are not at the bottom of the pay scale.
Okay, alright. Okay, next page, building maintenance. Looks normal. Forty-eight, forty-eight percent fringe benefit on that one.
Chuck, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Is Doug here?
Yes.
Hey, do we have the cur, the curb market in this budget, and your part two is for the renovation of the curb market up here?
Oh, Madison.
So, where we at on that? The roof?
Uh, they had a meeting yesterday, uh, sorry, let me walk up here. They had a meeting yesterday. I had numbers put together, uh, to put a new roof on that system. It's a internal box gutter system, and it's, it's wore out. It's beyond its life cycle. Uh, we put one number to it to put a new roof on it, which will be an A-frame roof system. It costs about seven hundred thousand dollars. It's actually more practical to tear that building down and put a new building in its place. We can do that cheaper than seven hundred thousand dollars.
Wow. We can put a new building for less than seven hundred thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
In today's market?
Uh, we could do, that's an eighty by, it's seventy-five by one eighty, so you could do an eighty by one eighty for about six hundred and twenty-five thousand with us doing it in-house.
New building?
Yes, sir.
I think we need to do it.
Even with this economy we're in right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. That's all I need to know. Write that note down, Chip.
Sir.
Put a stop back.
She's writing it down because she didn't know anything about it.
Anything else on building maintenance?
Demolition golf.
We could demo it in-house.
We've got to change that curb market.
Let me ask, in the new building, we're gonna have a fan in there when I go on Saturday mornings. I love the building.
I can put you one in there.
Let me get some air moving in the summertime. I agree, it does need some work.
Okay, next page, parks and rec. Parks and rec, just get the parks and rec back to full power. Is that right?
Kay, is the, uh, are the lights for Chisholm and Newtown included in this budget?
No.
No, they're request, they've been requested in the, uh, yeah, bond or whatever.
Yeah, part two.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
That's a request in her part two, like we would do for lease purchase items, which we're not doing lease purchase. We should, we have funds that we can, uh, provide funding for those items outside of the general fund budget.
Okay, thank you. Betty says yes. How's that? Yes.
That's good enough. If Betty says it, write it down.
Wait a minute, Kay, how are we on Gateway? Are we?
I do have some funding in here for, to take care of some things at Gateway.
But how are we on that, uh, the bathrooms out there? Are they done?
No, the, uh, we, we're doing the sewer. We've got the, we've got the decision on the engineering, and we're gonna move forward on it now, so. But, yeah, I'm just funding that.
How, how, how much longer on that?
Uh, I don't know how long it'll take them to.
Okay, what, what's left on it again? Cause I keep.
They just, they got to dig the sewer line and put the sewer line in and connect to city sewer.
So, they don't have the sewer line in?
Right.
So, I need to contact the water board?
We've got approval for doing it now, but it has to now be done. It's been engineered, and now we'll move forward on getting it done.
And who does it? Is it the city that put the sewer line in?
It's a Patrick question.
Patrick Johnson?
We're in the process of finalizing the design now to get the waterworks approved. Once they approve, we can move forward to.
So, you don't have the approval from the water board?
The water board will have to approve the connection on to their sewer.
And they have not approved it yet?
No, we, we've got to fi, finish the design, which is underway now, and, and I expect probably within the next thirty, forty, five days, that being complete, then we can submit those plans to waterworks. They then can review and approve. Once approved, then we move forward and look at whether that's a contract job or whether it's done in-house.
You know, I respect both of you and all that you do, but that, that, that was supposed to start in twenty nineteen. It is twenty twenty-one, and y'all telling me y'all just. It is twenty twenty-one, and y'all telling me y'all just not trying to approve a plan. Something is wrong with that, those people out there literally didn't have anywhere to go to the bathroom, that's what they call, I don't golf, but they golf, they called me and told me, they don't have anywhere to go to the bathroom when they're out there golfing, that's an embarrassment. I mean, Kay had to put some porta potters out there, because she didn't even realize the bathrooms were shut down, and the people couldn't use the bathroom out there. Is this any kind of way we can move this along, this is, this is one of those things, that's kind of sad, you know? And it's so funny, because when I talk to them, they say, oh, we've done everything we're supposed to do, it's on y'all. Well, I'll make a phone call. I'll call them, but you haven't presented them with anything to approve, so it's not on them, it's on you.
That's correct, we've got to finalize the design.
If this was Lagoon Park, and I want y'all to hear me, if this was Lagoon Park, it would not have taken y'all two years to get the bathroom straight. It would not have done that, it would not, and I feel some way about that, because it's Gateway, and it's in West Montgomery, it's at the bottom of the list, and it should not be. It should be just as important as any other facility that the city of Montgomery owns. It is not, we could say it is, but the actions show that it is not. I'm really hopeful by the time this year end, this project is over.
Okay, anything else on parks and rec? Going to the library? Any questions on the library? Number eighty-four. Next page, thirty-three, communications. Any questions on communications, number eighty-five?
I know we were talking about adding in some more dispatchers, is anyone here with the communications department?
Ms. Baby?
Yes.
Hell, we had a new director for the library?
Uh, no, sir.
We have, okay.
She was retired.
Ms. Olds, yeah.
Ms. Olds is retired. Just a long time.
About a year and a half, two years.
All right, nobody here from communications, what we need? Anything?
Marshay was talking about some employees.
Yeah, just asking about it.
Communication?
Where is Jamal, oh, you got communications, okay.
Is that separate?
He is communication.
He is communications.
This is communications, it's not the emergency communications, we can kind of, it can be confusing, it's just, it used to be public information and external affairs.
Uh-huh, got it, okay, thank you.
Good.
Are you looking for nine-one-one communication, they're not in the budget.
That's separate.
They're not funded by the city, it comes to the state.
I've got a question, Ms. Baby, when they said transfer to other funds, what is that, what is that for?
Okay, that's like, there's money in a department's budget that they need for a project that they're doing, and we can transfer it out and put it in a project account, so that if the work is not completed between October one and September thirtieth, then they can still use those funds, because you know, at the end of the year, general fund money, that's it. You can't spend it, it doesn't roll over until the next year.
So communications got a hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of projects they working on?
Uh, I think that has to do with, come on, Griff, help me.
Some of the Capital City Connection stuff?
Yes.
Has to do with what now?
Capital City Connection, you're on right now live, it's on our cable TV station for the city of Montgomery, operated through Troy University.
Right.
We spend that much money on that?
Probably that and a little bit more, actually, but some of it does come back to the city. And it was an agreement that was kind of set up, I think during the past administration, and was re-signed and re-upped through maybe twenty, twenty-three, or twenty-four, I need to double check the contract, but yeah.
And that's with Troy, right?
That's through Troy, right.
Griff, are you adding any streaming system into the communications budget, so that way we can do Facebook Live?
Yes, ma'am, and I actually had a great conversation with Troy last week, and they have the platform that they use now on Trojan Visions, and I've asked them to come down, and so they're gonna install new cameras in here, no additional cost to us, and we'll be able to stream it from here to Facebook Live, to IG Live, and to Twitter, anything we want, so we'll be up there.
Any more questions?
Yes, one more, Griff, Griff, can we look at doing like a monthly interview with the council?
Yes, sir, we can do that, we used to do, I think Michael Verdel used to do that, so we can bring it back too, and we actually have a new staffer, Adoria, in our department, and she has some TV experience from college, and we'd love to do that with all of y'all.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Yeah.
Come on, man, you all on Facebook, what you need to be on TV for?
Okay, any other questions? Griff, any more questions, Griff? Okay, next page, page thirty, the museum, any questions on museum?
Yes, I do, actually, I know that the museum does a lot of fundraising on their own.
Right.
So I know there is an opportunity for us to cut into this, unless they can show proof of burden that they are doing something within the city of Montgomery, where they're bringing in some of our students from MPS, I know they done it one time with BTW, but something else, they're showing that they're working within the city of Montgomery for these funds that we're giving them. The museum gives. Otherwise, I believe is, we can use this to fund the fire department, and their four hundred and ninety people.
So you would recommend cutting out the museum?
I'm sorry?
You would recommend cutting the museum out?
I do, yes, I do, President, Mr. President.
Huh?
No.
Yeah.
That is a Shakespeare we're talking about, correct?
Yes, Shakespeare.
Oh, Shakespeare is the other, oh, that's-
They fundraise, they charge for tickets going in, it's benefiting the city, because it's a beautiful location, but we don't have to pay their salaries.
You have Sarah, Sarah, your employees in there, Sarah at the museum.
City employees.
The city employees.
Their city employees.
Well, they're city employees, yeah, of course, but they fundraise, and they get a lot of money coming in outside of it.
Most of their money goes to features there, that, you know, like they get people, raise money to do their cultural park outside.
Mm-hmm.
All that stuff was given to them, okay? And it's a way of life museum, you know, and we don't put-
It's a benefit to the city.
Benefit to the city from a lot of different things, recruiting.
In front of museum?
They probably aren't, not exactly.
Well, Ms. Blalock, can we have somebody from the museum come to-
Marshay, is that what you want?
Yes.
Come to the next meeting, and so we can, okay, and maybe we'll figure out if there's something we-
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I'll contact you.
Okay. All right, cultural affairs, any questions about that item? I don't think anybody's here for that department either, anybody from cultural affairs here?
No, we just, so what is it that you would like to know, Mr. Genright, on cultural affairs? They had a decrease in their staff that went over to the Parks and Recreation Department.
Okay.
They need it.
Well, excuse me, they had a person to come over to cultural affairs, let me back up, that was city events, they had the decrease in, so.
We had an estimate last year for their budget, it was an estimated budget last year, and it just got back to normal.
How many people working at the department?
Just one person in cultural affairs, just one right now, and I think she's got, one person that will be coming on in next year's budget.
You look at your budget-
An administrative assistant.
You look at your statement, this month, come out on August thirty-first, so far year-to-date, cultural affairs spent two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. I got one person in there.
And that's the director?
That's two.
She does not have, no one's in the administrative assistant slot right now.
So the salaries for that department, so year-to-date, through eleven months, is two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars.
Is that one person, Betty?
I would hope there's a secretary in here.
They don't have a secretary right now.
They don't?
Okay.
That position is not free or current.
So we spent two hundred and seventy-six thousand on one person?
No, sir, that's operating expenses as well.
Okay.
But the salary's two oh six, and benefits this year were ninety-four.
Say that again, someone was speaking, and I couldn't understand.
How many people in the department, Ms. Baby?
As of today?
Yes.
One. But her salary is not two hundred and six thousand dollars, let me sure.
Does that not include the two in there that are helping her, or are they on the Parks and Rec?
Angie, can you look at that and see what the expenditures are for exactly? I've got someone looking at it up in the system, okay?
But the total, I guess they spent it for professional service and all that kind of stuff, advertising.
Mr. President? Mr. President?
Yes.
Ms. Betty?
Yes, sir.
So to clear it up, the budget in cultural affairs has three people in the budget, and only one person is there now?
At this moment, working, yes, and I've got Angie over here looking into the system to see if the other positions were filled at any time during the year.
So besides an assistant to the person in charge of cultural affairs, what is the other person, what is?
We'll be able to determine that hopefully in just a second. I can't remember every department's positions throughout the city, with thirty-seven departments.
They're spending about twenty-five thousand a month in that department right now. Two seventy-six, I can tell you that, you get a monthly report-
That's the budget.
It'll show you two seventy-six. That's what she spent, that's what she spent year-to-date. No, 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 you got, you get a report, you get a report once a month, it shows you what they spent, okay? The budget's five hundred thousand.
And that was only put in there because last year, we had no idea how many people would actually be in that department.
Yeah, but-
So we kind of padded it after Clark's budget.
Can we get a breakdown, Ms. Betty, next week on cultural affairs, and how much we spent thus far this year in salary?
We can.
Okay.
And we'll send it to Ms. Blalock, and she can put it in your box.
Just email it to us.
Email it to you.
Email it when you get it.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Could we also, is it possible to get kind of a rundown of the activities in cultural affairs, or, because I know it was new last year?
Job descriptions.
Yeah, job descriptions, but it grew a lot.
It's new in the current year.
Right, it's new in the current year, but is there a way, Chip, to get kind of like a, hey, activity sheet?
Of what these expenditures are for, or what they actually did?
Or what they did, and what they're planning to do, you know, and maybe there's some overlap in economic development depart, you know?
I don't believe there is.
Okay.
Chip, what do they do, what is cultural affairs? That used to be under public information, you know, and combined, so we did have some overlap of that type, because the city was doing some special event stuff, and we were also, had the museum under public information, we had special events, all these various things, so we got everything where it needed to be in its own department. And what they're doing is just taking the lead on the city's behalf of promoting special events, where we have more control over what we do, and more control over how these various events go, so we're not relying on outside entities that we don't control.
And Mr. President-
So it's a promotion, it's a promotional. Yeah, it's, you know, special events, cultural affairs.
The museum budget can go into cultural affairs?
I don't think it fits, but it is under cultural affairs, I mean, museum, museum report.
If they're doing the heat events for the city, the museum does not. No.
Marc, Marshay, have you met with the staff at the museum recently, or have you gone to the museum recently?
I have.
Okay, yeah, that will be, I can help you line up a tour and an activity, go over there, I think they, all the students in MPS go there throughout the year. It's a big operation, Marshay.
Okay.
Council members, to go back to cultural affairs and the number of people that are actually paid in that department, it's one, and it's the director. I know y'all probably looking at twenty-one budget units, looking at two hundred and six thousand, five thirty-four.
Yeah.
Well, that budget was in there, it has changed since then, because it has been moved to other line items within the budget, that's not anybody's salary, okay? And so right now, we're looking at expenditures in salary of about ninety-three thousand, and that includes fringes, and it includes the fringes for that one employee.
So your hundred and ninety-two thousand, you got in the budget for salaries is more than one person?
Yes.
Three people?
We budgeted for three people, and we've only had one person working in that department. And the expense to that salary line and fringes is about ninety-three thousand dollars.
Betty, my question is this, okay, according to the financial statement we get from you once a month, we spent two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars in that department this year. This year, year-to-date, year-to-date, we spent two seventy-six, four thirty-five.
Okay, in the department, but that's more than salary.
And we only had one employee.
Right, more than salary fringes, though.
And that salary must be ninety thousand a year.
Ninety-three.
Okay, so we spent additional one hundred and eighty thousand dollars on other things.
Within that department.
Okay.
And it could be for some of the events that have taken place.
Like the events down at the riverfront.
Yes.
Events at the riverfront.
Fifty-seven last month, correct?
Events, various items, it's not salaries.
You make a good point, Mr. Grimes, you spent fifty-seven thousand last month.
Yeah, we did.
I don't know, cultural affairs.
And they did the Asian festival, I think that was last month.
Okay, that answers the question, thank you, anybody else have questions?
Last, last-
And you said, but Ms. Baby, you said you were sending us some more up-to-date that went on cultural affairs?
We can give you an itemized detail of everything that's spent in that department.
Hey, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Betty, on rental and lease expenses for cultural affairs?
Say that again?
Rental and lease expenses on cultural affairs, from ten thousand to zero, why did we zero that line item out as far as what we're trying to do? If it's a promotional end of the city, and I know they do things at the train shed and the riverfront, and I think we need to look at, I talked about that at the riverfront, we need to look at this as a revenue generating, we own these facilities, so I don't see nowhere when we talk about what we own on the riverfront, that we don't expect no revenue?
We had a thousand dollars expected, did you see, that was on the other one?
Okay, I want you to remember, this was the first year that this department has been in the budget. And when we created this budget, we had no idea what revenue was gonna be generated from it, nor did we have any idea what expenses they would incur, so we just did a generic budget, okay? And as line items, we need to pay different, you know, vendors and what have you, we had to put the line item that correctly described what that payment was for, which is probably not in the original budget, okay?
No, 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 I'm not talking about our expenses, I'm talking about our revenue that we're talking about, we should be taking in, in this department, with the train shed and all these things that we leased out, so we giving it away, but we being billed from it. I think we need to use these facilities to generate income for the city.
I'm all about generating income, you know that?
I know that, but I'm just-
I'm not the keeper of the gate when it comes to generating income from this particular department.
Okay, all right, we on the same page.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir, hold it, Clay?
Uh, Ms. Betty, I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention if we talked about it, but the other expense, seven-seven-six in cultural affairs, that we talked about there? A hundred thousand dollars in other?
Ninety-nine, five hundred, I'm looking at it, and I can tell, Mrs. Graham, I'll give you all a breakdown.
Okay.
Because, I mean, looking at this, you can't tell, then we have to get online and go into our financial software, and that-
Email us that, please. Let's just get a breakdown, what you talking about? Yeah, cut that out, but you got ninety-nine down here.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Okay. Yes, sir.
Just a quick, quick follow-up to what Coach Tim brought up about the revenue.
Keep in mind, you know, with the cultural affairs, the goal there for a lot is just for community events, and it is to be free to the residents of Montgomery. So cultural affairs is not necessarily meant to be a profit generator for all of you, but there will be some, but some of those had to be counseled through the Pope. So I also want to keep that in mind, too, if there were ideas that were brought up that would have been revenue generating, that we didn't do- that we didn't do, uh, in the last budget year, uh, just because of COVID protocols. But by and large, you know, the cultural affairs is trying to put on community-friendly events that'll build all, uh, segments of the community at, at different times. So that's not always gonna be in the generate like a, you know, a football game or some other thing where we're selling tickets actively, uh, to do that. So, and I, I think that this next year, assuming that this is a better spring in particular, maybe the fall, uh, there will be some revenue generating, uh, events that will come through there based on the ideas that were brought up last year that we just had to push off.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Hold on, ma'am. I mean, uh, Mr. President.
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. Okay, uh, Ms. Beeville, in the midst of you giving us information, will you also give us some information? I remember that, uh, uh, what was her name? Ashley, um, what's her name?
Let Better.
Let Better. She used to do some events around the city or whatever. Can you kind of get, go back and give me some numbers on what we, what she used to kind of operate out of?
I think she still does. She still does. Well, I don't know.
But she don't do these events anymore. Yeah. So, but I know she used to do them a little bit, uh, in the previous administration. So if you can give me some numbers to just see, uh, what we had budgeted for her. I'm not sure what, how she was budgeted, and I think it may have been a department that we killed altogether. We no longer have.
She didn't work in a department. She was a contract.
Okay.
So.
So she wasn't in the budget, is what you're saying? She wouldn't have been in our budget?
No, ma'am. Not like cultural affairs would be. I would have to know every vendor that we, she did business with.
No, 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 that's okay. Go ahead.
Okay, answer your question.
Counsel, can I, can I say?
Okay, yes.
Can I say one thing?
What's up?
You know, we're talking about renting these facilities. I had a promoter that, that wanted to do a rooftop party at one of the parking decks. And it was denied because I think they said they didn't want alcohol on the rooftop, but we doing alcohol on the, the boat ride. So we are turning down, and he had a, a, a nice setup. He was gonna do di- different parking decks, which would cost nothing. He was willing to pay everything, but simple stuff like that was denied. And I think that that would be, would have been a good look for a promoter from Atlanta to come here with a, a big following to give Montgomery something different. But we are turning down just those, those simple things that it was power up there. He didn't need anything but the parking lot. And it was denied.
Okay. Good point. Okay, anything else? Let's flip to page thirty-five, thirty-six.
Hang on, I got, I got a question on thirty-five. Betty, uh, we got the debt, debt payment. You got twenty, twenty million, three eighty-two. And, and I.
On what page?
Thirty-six, excuse me.
Okay, thirty-six.
Thirty-six, excuse me.
I see him.
You got the debt payment, and when I got that, this, this Terminus Municipal Advisor sent me that debt schedule. They said next year's payment, and there were some reasons I don't really understand. I'm, I'm.
Okay, so let me explain those to you.
Okay.
Uh, the debt schedule probably showed twenty-five point something.
It did.
Okay.
It's about a four million.
Twenty-six for a good number, okay?
Yeah.
And the difference between that number that you're looking at on nine-seven-nine-four-one-two of twenty-point-three-five million, and you would add another six hundred and nine, uh, thousand, three hundred to it, that's on page thirty-six. Education, okay?
Right.
All that's debt service, okay?
Right, right.
Now, on that schedule, the difference between something just shy of twenty-one million dollars that's in this budget, that variance has to do with one debt service payment that was not co- well, I shouldn't say payment. One, uh, bond that was not callable at the time we went to the bond market in March of this year.
Okay.
And so we had to push it out into next year. The funds are available for us to pay that not out of the general fund, okay?
Okay.
It's already sitting in the project, something four million, forty-eight thousand dollars, if I remember correctly, okay?
That's about right.
The money is there already. It's not coming out of the general fund.
And, and then there's, well, while we're here, that the next year, that number will jump up to twenty-eight million, five, five-twenty-two?
We got the same situation. We got a, the funds are there to pay that out, and we've got a small debt. And I know, Mr. Jim, like, remembers when Jeff Down was on board, we went through a deficit and got one point one million dollars that we only paying fifty to fifty-five thousand dollars every year over twenty years.
Okay.
I'm trying to get rid of it. We don't need it.
No, no, that, that makes sense. I knew there was a reason. She, she said a reason, and I didn't understand.
The note she probably said that was special revenue funds.
Correct, correct.
And, and there are. We have funds that go into, from lodging tax because lodging tax was earmarked to pay some of the debt service, okay, years ago. But after refunding and it got so convoluted, you couldn't keep up with it that way. But there's a line item in the budget that says transfer from other funds. And in the current year's, uh, budget is three point, uh, one seven million, if I remember correctly.
Okay.
We're not transferring those funds out of those special revenue accounts because we don't need to in the current year's budget.
No, that makes sense. That makes sense.
So that's what special revenue funds.
Thank you very much.
You are.
All right, Nick, pay. Come on now.
Hold on a second.
Hang on, let's just.
Hey, y'all wanna pay overtime today?
Yeah, we can do that.
All right, don't complain about this tax increase.
Thirty-five. Okay, on the retirement, cause I, I've had, um, a young man that's been consistent to ask us this whole council about the retired retirees. We had a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars budgeted for last year for them, and then we zeroed that out this year.
That was, that was a stat.
Let me just tell you about that. That had to do with two employees that worked in the retirement office.
Okay.
One retired this year, and the other person was moved to the risk management department.
So this office is just, this whole division is just gonna be zeroed out?
Is, is, it doesn't exist anymore because we under the retirement assistance of Alabama.
Betty, the, the fringe benefit life insurance there, it went way up.
Say it, sir. What page are you on?
Page thirty-six.
The fringe benefits for?
Yeah, seventy-one, three forty-two.
Mm-hmm.
Your life insurance weapon, two hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and twenty-four thousand.
Increases, but with that, we've kind of, um. Come up, please. This is managing risk, uh, management department, and, uh, I think for up until this year, if I remember correctly, we cut the bleeding off on that life insurance policy. Am I correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
Because every time someone retired, the city was, uh, paying for a life insurance policy for his retiree. And, you know, with age, the, uh.
So you've added all those people to the.
The courage amount came down, but the premiums go up.
What happened was is we, we had a blended rate for all city employees and all retirees. And so it got allocated based on that blended rate. When we did away with the life insurance for the city employees,
Okay.
the rate went up for the retirees.
That, that explains. Okay. I got it.
Because they're now covered on the state of Alabama, uh, for one-year salary as a death benefit.
And the insurance, and the life, and the medical insurance, eleven point six million. That's really what the cost is for the retirees?
That's the estimated cost, yes, sir.
Okay.
And it went up.
Okay, I got you.
Okay, so, so even though this office department is kind of closing out or gonna go under risk management, it still got twelve million dollars.
Well, you got obligation eleven million for that.
So, so the department is really not, they're just not gonna have any personnel in it, but it's still gonna be somewhat operable.
And whatever functions are needed for retirees, the person that has been moved to risk management is doing that, which doesn't require as much of her time along with dues, uh, on the benefit side in risk management.
Chuck handles all this now.
Chuck, that's your name?
Yes, ma'am.
Have we considered any raises for the retirees?
I need to answer that question. It has been discussed and talked about, but, um, that's a legislative, um, act now because we under, we are under the retirement systems of Alabama. If the legislature says that retirees will get a cost of living increase, then it would come before the council. You all would vote on it as to whether or not we can do it. My understanding from RSA, and I think, uh, Stacy Bellinger sent something to someone about this.
Me.
It was you, Ms. Johnson. But anyway, uh, we were told that, uh, we can't do that unless legislation allows it from the state of Alabama.
What about bonuses?
Same difference. It would still be. It would be a, yes, same thing.
So Charlie, what, Chip, could we ask our lobbyists to get involved and see if they couldn't give us some sort of, through our local delegation, um, approval to do it, when we can do it? Could we go ahead and maybe start that process with our lobbyists?
Yeah, we're, we're talking to them about pre-filing some bills now.
Okay, and that would be in there?
Right, it's on the list right now.
Okay.
Okay. Let me, Ms. Betty, one question.
Sorry.
I, I heard you said that the health insurance was going up. What was single coverage and family cu- how much is it going up? Do we know?
You mean for active employees?
Yes, for active.
I don't know. It's one of those sixty dollars, and I've got family.
It's not a ton.
It's not a ton.
I don't have the numbers.
When you consider the raises that are being given, I think for my family coverage is going to be four ninety, and it may have been four, sir.
Four sixty.
Four sixty. Yeah.
About thirty bucks.
About thirty dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, page thirty-seven. Any question on page thirty-seven? You'll see the short-term debt's gone. Anything else on page thirty-seven? Go on to page thirty-eight. Any question? We do have election expense in here. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
We anticipating another election?
I hope not till twenty twenty-three.
Okay, we got the money in there for next year.
For next year.
Nobody on this council ran for, for anything, right?
Mr. Jim, like.
Yes, ma'am.
What did I miss? I see Ms., uh, Blaylock smiling over there, so that's not a good sign.
She don't wanna go through the process again.
He asked me when the next election was. I told him I hope not till twenty twenty-three.
But she's covered.
Yeah, she's got it. We have to, if somebody decides to run for something or die.
Well, we don't want to die.
Hey, Charlie being real.
Sorry, sorry.
Um, Betty, I have a question. Um, I see we have the Montgomery Clean City Commission. Uh, I meant Committee. That's different from the commission, right?
Montgomery Clean City. Let me get you on page thirty-nine.
Thirty-seven, I'm sorry, I went back. That's different from the Clean City Commission, is that correct?
Okay, let me look here and see what you're talking about. I'm gonna roll my mouth and put my foot in it before I see what it is. What's the number over here? Seven-three?
Nine-nine, what, seventy-eight, seven oh-two?
Um, you're on page thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
Yeah.
Thirty-seven.
Ninety-nine, forty.
Montgomery Clean City Committee.
Hundred, hundred thousand, new money.
That's different from the commission, is that correct?
It's not the commission.
It's not the commission?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Okay.
What is that, Betty?
We would, I, I would have to get the detail. We get requests in, and the mayor approves them. But what they do and how they do it, I would have to pull that, and I don't have a problem looking it up for you.
Mayor, you up there somewhere?
Betty, can you just email it to us, please?
The Montgomery Clean City Committee, Mayor, you up there somewhere? I don't know.
We come back to that.
We come back. Okay, Mental Health Authority, we funded them a hundred thousand more than last year, and they have expanded their operation. Do we need to expand that?
Yes.
Think they need an extra hundred thousand?
Yeah, that, that's gonna help with that new facility.
Seven-eight, seven oh-six. I think they need to increase that one.
Does that even go up to seven hundred thousand?
Yeah, go to seven, I think.
I'm sorry, seven-eight, seven oh-six?
Yeah, seven-eight, seven oh-six. If we can't figure out what Clean City Committee is, we may move it to Mental Health.
Yeah.
All right, let's go to page thirty-eight. We already there. We already passed the election expense. We got that. You don't need election expense. We got some extra money there to put over in Mental Health.
Okay, yeah.
You making Mental Health real?
Well, we just, that, that's where we get the hundred thousand dollars for them. Okay, I know that we did not fund the, uh, oh my gosh, child protect.
Yes, they asked for seventy-five thousand.
Well, let's do that.
Let's do seventy-five thousand.
Thank you.
You gotta figure out where you're taking it.
We'll have to take it somewhere to get it there, but we, we work out some. Well, we got, we, we'll find that number. Okay. Seventy-five thousand for child protect. I'll, I'll work that number out.
What was it that you mentioned before child protect? I didn't get a note on it.
Uh, the, uh, Mental Health.
And what were you saying to do with that?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna set up a thousand on Mental Health. We gotta find where to get it at, but then seventy-five thousand for child protect.
I got child protect.
Have to move some money around for that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anything else I wanna bring up?
Oh, Charlie, look a little bit. When we get a chance, I wanna go back to Charlie, page twenty, if you don't mind.
Page twenty?
Twenty.
Way back. I wanna go back far back enough.
Yes, sir. Charlie, let's go back.
Page twenty?
Number thirty-six.
Huh?
Page twenty, thirty-six.
Page twenty, number thirty-six, economic development.
If, if we're gonna be serious about this, um, department, they don't have travel or train. If I want, you know, something in my district, I want them to be able to travel to, speak to.
They can't charge you for riding around in Montgomery, man.
I didn't say in Montgomery. I'm talking about if I want them to go to Georgia.
What are you thinking? What are you thinking? Yeah, and the first ain't even hired yet. You know, that person, we don't have, we don't have, we don't have a person in job, in a job yet. Something they gotta come back and get the money from another special account.
Okay, I just wanna make sure it's in there.
I think, I think the mayor, I think the mayor could sign him some money.
Man, we need one of those transfer accounts.
I think Betty's got one.
Uh, Mr. President, I do wanna, um, see if we can give the Botanical Garden ten thousand dollars.
We normally do that out of our, our discretionary money.
The Botanical Garden.
Yeah, we normally do that out of discretionary money. We do that every year.
Is it Oak Park?
Mm-hmm.
Oak Park, oh, yeah, we like, we always give them, I always give them like.
Man, District Three got plenty money to give.
That's right, District Three got a lot of money left over, I noticed. You be, you can handle that by yourself. All right, then you can be a queen out of that girl. All right, anybody else got any questions?
Mr. President, I do.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Betty.
Yes, sir.
I wanna, uh, ask you about our capital improvement accounts.
Okay.
What do we think that the council's gonna be able to do in their capital improvement accounts this year?
Okay, you say that you're referring to your six-eighteen funds?
Yes, ma'am.
And what will you be able to do with them?
No, ma'am. What do you think dollar-wise we can do in our capital improvement accounts?
As far as how much money will be coming in?
Yes, ma'am.
That's what you're referring to, the revenue.
Well, yes, ma'am. And what I'm referring to is when I carried that bond issue over.
Oh, I'm saying, I know, you and I had that conversation.
We, cash is okay.
Okay, so.
I, I was just wondering where.
Okay, well, we haven't had that conversation yet because I need to look at the end of the month, what we gonna actually have fall out. You know, we're predicting that we could have six point one million dollars to go into fund balance, right?
Right.
So that's where that money comes from that you were talking about. And I get confused when you say your capital improvement. We can't move those funds over into your six-eighteen money. It would have to be in a separate project. You see what I'm saying? Because that money that goes in six-eighteen comes from tobacco funds, okay?
All right.
So, uh, that's a conversation that has to be had as soon as, uh, we close out this month to make sure that our dollars are gonna fall where we think they're gonna fall.
Well.
Okay.
While we're right there, Betty, I got one, I got another question. I guess, I don't know if this is the time or not.
Okay.
Glenn, are you finished?
I'm not real sure.
No, no, he not finished.
I didn't think I am.
Go ahead, Glenn.
Betty, we need, you know, we got the hundred and ten thousand dollars in the bond, and I don't think that's in our account just yet.
Well, you, you gotta realize I can't convolute those funds. It will never be in that account. It'll be in a different account.
So we can spend that money?
That's a mayor's call. I can't make that call.
Somebody needs to explain to us before we vote on this budget that we need some money on our capital improvement, and we need that hundred and ten thousand dollars. Or we need to figure out what we're gonna do with the budget.
Because now, Ms. Betty, you've said a couple times when, especially when Mr. Grimes has asked about the budget and how stable it is and how we gonna go on, that, you know, you got the money. You got the money to pay this, and we got the money to do that. So to tell us as the council, you can't tell us you can do anything for our district until you close it out. Like, we don't know if we got the money. That's too.[1786.34]
No, 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 I'm not saying we don't have the money. I said I don't know how much we have. Right now, I'm projecting six-point-one million, and you saw that on the big screen last council meeting, which was last week. I'm not, it's not my duty to say when those monies can be expended, okay?
Well, who, who's, who's is it?
Hold it, hold, wait, you're asking... Glenn, let me, let me make a comment.
Okay.
We put a million dollars in the bond issue for this council.
Okay.
That should be a simple allocation to each council district. A certain amount of that money should go to each council district in their capital funds expenditure. Is, is that, am I wrong?
You're correcting that it was put there. I'm just waiting for the mayor to tell me when he wants me to start setting up the various projects for those funds.
We'll handle that.
So, I'm, we need to hear that from him.
We need to hear that before we get the budget passed.
All right, Betty, I got another...
Mayor, you gone? You ain't on the phone no more? Mayor?
I'm, I'm listening, I'm listening.
Okay, okay, Mayor, Ms. Beeville said that's just so simple, you letting us know when we can get that. Do you have any idea when that money gonna be released?
Well, that, that, that was, that, that means you gotta have some expression on some other thing.
We gotta do what? We gotta do what?
We can have that off-line.
All right, okay. All right, I got another question, Betty.
Okay.
I'm looking at the August thirty-one statement. And I'm looking year-to-date income revenue of two-hundred-and-forty-six million. I'm looking at the total expenses on the bottom year-to-date of a hundred-and-ninety million. That's a fifty-six million dollar difference. So, there's some big money that has to go in this last month, or there's something that gets paid in September.
Oh, yeah, we'll be paying bills in October.
Yeah, I know, but, but...
Because we have a thirteenth accounting period that won't cut off until November the third.
Right, but right now, we, we look like there's a difference, I'm, I'm looking at the number. It looks like a difference of fifty-six million dollars.
That we have not spent.